Hi, I'm Kristi Heinz, I'm a volunteer at Johnson's School. We have Johnson that had taken control of us as a state board meeting. We are proud of it. The school board meeting allows schools to provide greater insight to the school board and discuss about the great work of our day. We have here Johnson. At our school, we live and breathe the district mission, which is inspire, educate, challenge, support, all through its highest level of learning and personal development. Your Johnson takes pride in our students and our social practices. We have dedicated teachers, specialists, aides, and candidates to deliver the strong academic structure across the county area from a daily basis. Our belief is aligned to the district's belief in students deserve challenging rigorous comprehensive curriculum that leads to active achievement, social well-being, and self-fulfillation with citizenship for so long. We believe that technology must be an integral part of a social performance. Tonight, we're going to show you how your honorary commissioner and police commissioner hundred, Kristy Heinz, our LSC director, has put together a presentation to provide you with insight into the 21st century learning that's happening here at Johnson's Elementary School. With that said, let's bring up Kristy Heinz.
Hi, I'm Kristy Heinz, I'm a volunteer at Johnson's School. And I'm here to show you this little glimpse of the technology that we should have happening here at Johnson's School. I can probably talk from the background, but it's just a little preview of what we're doing. And mostly, well, all of the teachers would say officially as we're taking our AICD this year, we're going to use over 100. And actually, we'll show the particular lighting here. So this just shows you how internal technology at Johnson's School is going to be. Technology is changing very soon for Johnson's School, and it's pursuing it in all the housing areas, in all the areas, anywhere in the way we can, right? And I'll start with our most fundamental skill, this little internet kind of briefing. The addition of laptops and ICADs have completely changed the way I view students working in the classroom. You'll see now when you go into classroom, you're going to be black. You'll see the tools, you know, to be off, there'll be several good teachers who are working on ICADs, who are working on laptops, and it's really changing the way I view my year. What's nice about using all this technology is that each student can work at the same role at the ease. We have especially designed programs that adhere to the students' needs and the needs of the present grade. So we're all getting there, just at that grade level. And the apps and programs that we make each student are meeting each student's needs. It goes away, and if a teacher had to come up with an individual activity for each student, a class would take a little time, they want to cover, they take hours and hours, but because their schooling is just well, they're already made, that are such high quality, it's great that we're starting to set and find these resources, and naturally, it gets with programs and apps that are there. My little future since that comes, and obviously, the students are highly motivated by Asian that's the curious, because all of them are here for the money, the money, this is the first one that's home, so it's a huge accomplishment, because they do, they love the bright colors, they love the interaction, and technology is just completely new to their head. And one of the features of me, and I have that opportunity at home, so it's great that there are students that are going to be still here at school. Here's a picture of this one, this ICAD to our faculty and residents. We've got a first grade teacher, she's using the documentary camera to project her book. On the screen, you can see all the pictures of Blue, he's making, we have a clear review of book, all of Earth, it's just great for them to be able to see what's happening, and we have this guy. And then looking at to loving tree, or surrendering tree. And another thing that's interesting technology is the new libraries offer, it's not testing, we just got it last year. And it allows students to log in, and they can actually connect with each other in a social way, where it's all through our library catalog. So they're connecting, they can print each other, they can read, they can download new books, and they can keep lists of books that they've read, books that they've downloaded, books that they've heard and read, and the kids have just completely, they're so excited about this, and they'd love to do this, and it's a great way to go to Shinnell, reading, and they're excited about it, it's a road trip. So it's a social, social network for them, and I mean, technology allows them to see people, places around the world, and places in the industry that we're not possible for. This is a student, this is a student who has speech, and I think, and I mean, socially perceived as this is having the technology, you have smart boards, they can interact, they have protectors that are announcing, you can show video clips from various websites, and I think every teacher is really dreaming, which is important, she has access to social stuff. And then this example is from MAM, and the technology is really in that, it's not just straight up the walls for classrooms, and these are students that need to learn everywhere. And in this example, we have fifth graders who have actually created a video library on the classroom site of Matthews, and it's the kids themselves, I'll show you with example, the kids are showing how to solve math problems, and then they can open, they can access other classrooms, they can page out all these tutorials that they themselves have created. So they can start them on the ground, or they can start some in their class, they can just pull up one of these videos, and watch their whole class, and explain what they're doing, so here's a quick example.
Three and two thirds minus one, two and one minus one, Matthew. We know we can subtract that, we need to count the denominator, so we know that three times eight equals twenty-four, so that's the common denominator. So it's something down the top, and it goes down to three twenty-four, and sixteen twenty-four, and it would be that, it would be that, sixteen minus three twenty-four, and then thirteen twenty-four, and then three minus two equals four, and our answer, our difference is one plus thirteen twenty-four.
So this is the very first time we've done it, so it gets kind of clear as they watch these examples of keywords, it's like a, our explanation to remember as they, because they're not the teacher, and really, it's the memory, it's the way they're thinking. So it's, and then, like I said, it's, it's, they're used all day, they, every classroom you walk through, you'll see all the traditional papers here, and we're allowed to include all day, every day, every day, some practice. We've got teachers in another room, and now Dr. McPherson as well, which is especially a part of the teachers, they will buy out the visual, use so much of the visual, like the resource, right, for teachers to be able to show all these visuals as they, and then, I know the teacher at Johnson's is using the technology, students in charge of the learning, you can see, it's hard to cover, and it's happened to a student, is maybe lately blocks around the side, it's showing, and his kids are looking at the history, and he's explaining math problems to the rest of the classroom. In all the classrooms you walk through, around the school, you'll see that the kids are really using the technology to progress their ways into, into their career. Thank you.
This is a communication of what the commissioner, the district leader, and the principal at Johnson's School is providing, very rich, voting for students who also tend to be acknowledging the local process. And I just wanted to recognize all of the teachers that are here at Johnson's School, and members of your community, and please say hello. Thank you, everyone, for being here, thank you for a lot of the time to share with us.
Thank you, Mr. Director, it's very impressive, and thank you to the community, as a leading supporter, spending time with this technology tonight, I wish you a lot of good luck in the state, of making people, way, uh, that's a good, a special honor, so thank you so much, and you're welcome.
One thing I'd like to bring up is that a bunch of board members have taught, each was sort of at the school, or one or three schools, and I'd like to give a word to the president tonight, I am also, I'm a vice chancellor of Johnson's, I'm a fellow, I look forward to working with the district.
Thank you, Mr. Director, I'm excited to be in the middle of a conference.
This is a group we asked, and many of the subjects were proposed, and we've come up with a group, and Andrew, Julie, Stutler, basically all of you. We had a discussion, we had a class, we had a conversation about that, we had a non, and a conversation about, uh, the mayor's, and the, 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 and, I think, appropriate that we would, uh, compare it to a man, and a discussion, and sharing, and, and, and some of the, some of the information. This is a, we're okay, this was, uh, our, uh...
Thank you. Great, thank you.
And you think there are more modifications that we do, that we would have?
Yes, under seventeen, I have approval for modifications to be brought on every episode, so I was very, I, uh, used to, uh, fashion, and, uh, so.
I, I think, yeah, there's a question, but I'd like to see the baby in the hand, I have a burger, and it's very hard to describe the number of presidents, and what, here those, actually, actually, if there's those, it's, it's, he does, and, and, if, if, if there's those, it's, it's, actually, um, you know, you're, you're, to, to, to future work, it's, 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 uh...
In the, in the, in the session, in the, in the session, so, uh, delay that, just have this go forward, this one time, and then get it, uh, so I would feel just very much, uh, we did, as a, we can't, we should have this, but we can always, uh, to, to retain it, uh, so, so.
I'd really love, uh, I'd really, uh, I'd really, uh, I need to go, I need to go out, uh, we sent it to you, like, the house, the whole session, I, I get the job, and that's, it's, I'm, 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 sorry.
It's the approval, the president should have, the pastor, it's better, I think we do that, and, it's better, it's, uh...
Thank you, Mrs. Antonar. This evening, we are very fortunate to be recognizing one of our staff members as an Illinois School Nurse Senior Year, Ms. Gilbertson is here this evening, and to introduce and share some details on this special honor, the Journal of Rejoicing Technologies, Lieutenant Student Services, who will have Chris come on and co-lead as well, and be introduced and talk a little bit about this recommendation.
Good evening, I'm a parent, I'm a member of the number of senior students. It is a great honor that I stand before this evening to recognize Ms. Gilbertson, District Hundred's very own Illinois School Nurse Senior Year for 2014. Ms. Gilbertson joins select few of the workers who stand alone, tracing this honor. This board is in favor of achievement, leadership, for this Illinois Association of School Nurses and the community, as well as direct and outstanding service to children. The application requires a self-assessment based on national standards of school nurse engagement, six standards of practice, and eight standards of professional performance. Example, these standards according to the Vol. Law Amendment to Member of the League, thirty years in nursing, certified health nurse for seventeen years, sixty, I should have been a year of district manager. During her tenure as district manager, she served in the district office, basically, this section of, of the name, and it says that they have, um, after the office, they now, she'll continue to lead the office, they will hold the duty card, which is both the, the, example of the standard that the Board of Regional Health and Food recently laid, and the education division of Illinois Association of School Nurses. At that point, she also served in the R.I.S. committee. She also had her report, by O.C., she's constantly at Congresses of U.A. She served on the advisory board, and, uh, last thing, this board is holding out that the Illinois Association of School Nurses, we hold our, her co-exes, all the, for the law. It's my, uh, now the opportunity to attend to that lunch, and, uh, right by the press on any half, or half, she's the district manager. In addition to, you're, you're the senior one, organized, you have a staff, and then parents, board, or, or, Chris, Captain Martin, and Sue Tyson, and Harvey, and, and, so, with all that said, please show the man, who, 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 and, 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 and the district, then the district's role in saving all those of school nurse, uh, initiative year for 2014 person.
Making a conclusion, I just want to say this super physical, Chris, thank you very much for your real ability, basically, our kids, our parents, our staff, and very proud of you to recognize Johnson's Springfield State Organization, so congratulations.
There's going to be, uh, or, 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 uh, or, 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 or,
Hey, good evening, board members, and, uh, here, welcome to Johnson's here this evening. Several items I'd like to update the board on and share with the community. First of all, since the last time we met, on Friday, September twenty-seventh, it was our school week day, I know some of the parents here in the audience probably are worried what we do on those days. I can tell you that it's a very busy day, and the district's staff are important, and we have multiple activities going on with some of our major initiatives when it comes to learning and teaching. The primary goals of all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school, was to continue the PLC process, but I did very, very good, I was loved about how those groups of staff actually worked together on those days. At the elementary level, the focus was on standard-based grading, and specifically, the development of the work of, and those staff at Johnson's, is very aware of that, and I know that particular day was spent talking a lot about math, in particular, and how we're going to implement those new expectations on the grade before going to parents. At the middle school level, the focus of the PLCs now, and the larger, also in the smaller groups, and their departments, and the grade levels, was on big, big, big instruction. One of the most significant challenges we have ongoing in all the classes at the middle school level, is making sure that we, we need to be fit to all of the instructional levels. And my day at high school level, we need to tend to, we have to, we're, we're, we're hiring, we gotta get speaker that day, I actually, it was after the course that morning, and we had most staff, most high schools were there, and the topic was form of assessment, again, trying to make sure that a lot of students are learning on a regular basis, and, uh, and around that day, consulting, work, work, and work with each of the different content areas of different high schools, focusing in the PLC groups on what is good for the system, uh, for students at that level, again, creating, having a common message that the larger groups, and the smaller groups are focused, again, so that if the board agree, the, 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 well, the board know that that day is very valuable to us, and to make sure our instruction and the classes are paid for basis, this is best, uh, maybe. I also had the opportunity last week to attend the large unit district association call conference, and it's always a great opportunity to get updated on the state level banks, as well as network with large unit districts, and, uh, two topics I'd love to update the board on, first is, uh, one of the major components of the call conference always is legislative, is what basically we're going to put on the district public address in Washington. As we know right now, not just in Washington, but in the right, figure out the budget. And it does have some impact on schools, if it longer goes on, the more, you know, the, uh, direct impact right now, but if it doesn't continue much longer, we will start to see some virtual down effects in some of our program. However, the focus was primarily at the state level. Three major work centers going on in Springfield right now, that may have potential legislation, one of them is to charter school task force, which I know our board, we're very, very glad with that, that task force is put together because of the virtual school proposition that we, uh, were addressing last spring, uh, the governor asked, and the state legislature asked this task force to put together. They've only met once so far, they're actually meeting again in this week, maybe in two weeks, in the next several months. There's twenty-six people on this particular task force, and it's a variety of political tasks, is how I would describe it. The only business council does that, the I.A., City Committee of Chicago, the I.N.A., Illinois Energy Administration Association, leadership representation, and the education community as well. Luda does have to represent in that area, because of our interest in the particular topic, both businesses, Professor Tadia is on it, and he did update his task working to that, and, 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 work ethic, and it will certainly keep us in the loop on that task next. As towards where we are going to be forming our own virtual projects, and we got items on the agenda this evening regarding policy, as well as the, and our government, we have the school districts that we're working there. So we will keep our, 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 charge rules scenario as well as that in this board. The other two items, one was school funding mission, the General Assembly has a school funding task force that's working, they're having many discussions about the state funding one, so we want to make sure we watch that carefully. They have figured a way, they know the history of Illinois school funding, so if you're tired of, you might, you can read the history of whatever file we're writing today, this book's not available on the website, uh, support website, and it is a link, it goes into the history of how things evolved over time, and it is pretty detailed. I think that particular commission is a very conjunction of the pension, and I know there's been some media coverage most recently, uh, a few legislators, the Department of Commerce, believe that they are speculating, they may have a recommendation, it may come out here in the next two weeks, there's going to be no session at the General Assembly, we'll be watching that carefully, uh, it was certainly the consensus of the group that I was with last week, that if that legislation gets brought to the General Assembly at some time, it actually takes place, uh, so that actually, we see what it looks like, we put it, it's a pay lawsuit, probably, not a, not a, based on the, uh, the foundation of the Constitution. So we're mainly seeing how the pension scenario is going to play out, and we'll be watching both that and this school funding board work simultaneously, because, quite regularly, the Bible's, like, a lot of them, they get a lot of, and organize, like, it's really do that, work together, there is, there is, there is, there is, there is, so, I know we have a meeting set up, uh, later, uh, next week and a half, and so I think would be a topic that will ask for their thoughts on that, and as this is, so, it is, uh, so then, uh, the only other topic that, uh, there was several other, because one particular I want to share, in the office, and I attended one session, uh, with another area, it's basically, I think it was probably the most, uh, lightest session that's there, and it was kind of last in the tradition, because one of our other contenders was from the U.S. Department of Education, but they didn't, because all of them, their offices closed, so, as speaker could make the comments, coming in Washington, so therefore, uh, very high school, one of the super technical barriers part of the group, and he, uh, wanted the staff to talk about a business education change that may be recently in their high school curriculum, and I thought it was very exciting, and I know, maybe I've already made some initial contacts with some of the staff, we're going to be, you know, working with the high school staff here to see where we may be headed, and what intrigued us, wasn't what intrigued them, after we talked, after they presented, is, as the board knows, we made a lot of changes for our middle school, for our, our, especially, uh, in the entrepreneurial area, things like that, the twenty percent of skills, what we have not done so much of at the high school, uh, I'd say, our, our high school area, area, it's still pretty traditional, done some things, but it's still pretty traditional, would be much different than what we've seen in the past, and they just, this year, are going to have a whole new program, and it kind of goes along with the same thing. So we are going to, to that, this is going to be, uh, something that we want to report, and it's going to be coming over the board, you know, straight time, or, 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 or the, 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 But I think it will be exciting, and we certainly better that information. And finally, just to note, the great caller submitted, we'll see, that I've been asked to participate in a superintendent's summit at Northwestern University, on Thursday, I don't know if you're aware. Was invited to participate in that, and there's a flyer there, I have additional details and more information on that. Just want to bring that to board's attention, and this time, let's just be cautious. You're only school or education, I guess.
I asked to keep that.
Or. I was.
You know, I actually said this earlier, but I'm sure you're supposed to say about all the settings of the program. Johnson teachers, for free to say, they mustn't listen to what's said to me. But I could go down to the lounge and have a seat, and do the work all day. Approval to delete, where the goal is to point and give a role in the industry. Approval of intergovernmental freedom regarding Illinois, Michigan, Wisconsin. Approval of English, like which are standards for its daily create. Approval of annual application for recognition. Approval of support for character, no decisions, or reading habits, or songs. Approval of assistive marketing review. Approval to disclose the surplus assets. Approval of bills available to pay. Approval of order committees in the nation across the seven states. Approval of list, September 11, 2013, open close. September 20, 2013, open. And approval of restored, according to the post that was prior to 2012. Approval of course, non-직업, employment, resignation. Retirement is a little as, in the service, certified as retirement, non-직업. Is your role to accept? Do you like this, Robert?
Thank you.
Second, Madison, it's very discussion.
I just wanted to say, it's exciting to see us, we're working on our own, I mean, yeah, I just sent in another question about the policy, and maybe they won't have answered. I fully understand the character that sort of, my policy may fall from the district. I guess I could answer, just take a little bit of respect to whether or not this policy addresses all of our kind of multiple students. Because we made our own policy, and we talked a little bit about, you know, registration, and all those students, and, and such. And this policy now refers back on other, so, I think we would think that we were, not we, one of the parts of virtual work is school districts that have home school populations, and, and private school population. Because it might do well to make sure that the policy that's put together is very obvious to people that this is open to home school and private school students. What did I?
Yes, and I know you saw this on additional reports where it too. Tonight, it is improving the policies, we will be getting that gap and feedback, and I know this, and all of us have been able to that portion through, and we certainly will share that feedback. And we may be back, that was about, I don't know, based on, just hearing your feedback, and looking at this as well, so it's relevant to share with the others. It is a busy place in the world, and it's very, very, and you saw a little sample of that this evening.
Mr. Roman? This is Patto?
Yes.
Mr. Madison? Mr. Paulson? This is Juan?
Yes.
Mr. Campan?
Yes.
This is the Interpart?
Yes.
That's not your house, Howard, around there, Howard.
You might have to enjoy the meeting, and on the side, or destroy meeting under meeting controls. Try to enjoy the meeting, and see if that's worth it. All right, so down here, this is, actually, I have a little resolution that's remaining, uh, to my area. Okay, Mr. Paulson, it's very discussion. All right, this is essentially what we're following, yes? Mr. Roman? Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Campan?
Yes.
This is Patto? This is Juan?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
I need to change.
This is the Interpart?
Yes.
Okay, this is, I'm sorry, this is approved, and application to the board number, of course. To any. Mr. Roman? Second.
I just, one of the items, I had just looked at a certification, item number three, close to, no board member, or such, at the board, education, employee, act, or speak, coming down to the board, consent from the board. Additionally, I said, certification, no president, or the sole person for the board to do. I just want to make sure that Katie not really will work out the, because of the restrictions, we are questioned by the media, and respond to, you know, the whole thing, or giving them the power, so she's definitely, her, right, there.
With my interpretation of that, that the O S, that means something, that be the most unique as president, you know. I think what Mrs. Tony was trying to say, that's her, um, and she was a solicitor, her publisher, and so, and, and association schools. I think she was, was trying to say that, yes, they board, um, the sole person as president. You may say to anyone who wishes to add anything to the board. So if you figure yourself, you know, Campan, and the board, that's, I think, the whole board, the presidents, and so, they're the board. And that's been a very, and for many, many years, this group of boardists and assistants, so, yeah, we're so, 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 and, uh, now, you are not a muscle, and then in which shape was more, but it needs to be clear at this speech. Everyone knows, if I'm, if I say anything about something that I'm a leader, or a decision the board made, I don't, so, so, so. So I don't know if everybody else, I see sometimes that, if anyone else wants to check.
Yeah, I remind you that you always need to speak as an individual, kind of, board, as an individual, particularly, asking, on, actually, I have, and state director, visiting, oh, there are coast, there are active, on New York, asking, span, on, visiting, gay, or four, I think, for some holiday, that feels so compelling to me, as long as it's specific, to say, for. But the board policies, the top of the board, when we can, if there are, when we speak on the fact that the policy, and, 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 and.
I'm just going to, like, the issue of 2004, first, we have seen, and then the first, we have, we have that, I guess, the board, it was a secret message.
All right, every, uh.
There is one issue that wasn't discussed, but, uh, and this is, and that's the one, certainly, the current person, uh, by way of a line of, this is probably, we, just wanted to ensure that, you know, I mean, I like, this, uh, part of the, this, we're all aligned, for, for, obviously, we have a interpretation of what the crystal is possibly is. I have to, number 11, in every other context, and, again, I just want to clarify that there are times when I, most people, I'm sure, there's, you know, those hours, those moments, so, yeah. Now, certainly, clearly, there may be a time, that I personally will not be able to respond to that time. Corresponding, 1112, you know, which talks about, uh, I respect our attendance, or the process, surprising, those are by heart, very important, I think it was times. Sure, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, all right, anyway, because I forgot, uh, it's big. Uh, number 12, I also, I respect to all participants, etc., in order to process, not to what surprises me. Again, you know, there are times, we get reports, day four, or so on, I just think it's, you know, there are times, and, you know, those are by heart, and, but I might come to my answer, but I, I don't want to presume as a gang or a myself, because I have my trouble talking, so. And that, that's, you know, my reaction to the process. I think it's a goal, I don't know, 10 years, or, or five years, and, you know, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to remove that, you know, nor do you pay my, okay?
Yeah, and, you know, I think, to the contrary, the whole point of these things have been to make sure that there's full participation by board members. And every board member feels comfortable participating because they know they'll be able to respectfully, their, and, since we're highlighting parts of this that are very dear to us. We did have a point here that said, when we vote, board members will explain their vote. I would take it to me, just at the time we vote, but hopefully, if it's an item that we can afford as for discussion for a couple of meetings. Having everybody's thoughts out there as early as possible, so that we can think about what our colleagues are, are saying, is really helpful. So I would be happy that that point is in there to remind us not to be shy, as I know some of us are.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Tony. Um, if you came to us from our Tony, and then, uh, the section of the board, to make it, to kind of give people a way to work when they need it. So we did use the word, you know, avoid surprises. I mean, I think, should get something in here, that there will be no surprises, and we're like, well, we can avoid it, but sometimes we're avoidable. So if there's any other language we can put in here to, to make it that seem so limited, and, you know, and all of us with busy lives, I mean, I can't use Argentina. But, but everyone, the intent is to say, we're going to try our best to communicate openly, you know, parents about to surprise each other, you know, if we're talking about voting one way or another, that's how we're going to vote. Uh, you know, it's all going to be above the board, so that everybody understands each other's thinking, and we can work with each other, and have a synergy if the board needs to make the best decisions.
One last question, I, I just want to, Mayor Paulson, this is the first time in his business, he added some minutes to it today. Is this a vote, I think, at this point, I'm confused a little bit about when we need to get by, or, you know, the round rules, or the, or the voting.
We have the three-step process for our curriculum and our policy decisions. This is really not a board, a part of our policy, so the three-step process doesn't need to apply here. Uh, in, in the meantime, we can certainly entertain, you know, a reason and, or table it, but, you know, we did this in August, and, and we reviewed the whole policy in August, and made the additions, so the additions are best. I didn't think it was substantial enough to speed to boards anymore time, because our memories are faded from August, so, you know, I didn't want to distill this any further.
I don't recall a campaign in August, but, you know, I'm just going to hear through the policies that may, etc., it sounds like the policies that we, I think, it's important, and we recognize, and we feel, of that, that we're doing, and policies, that's what this is. Jim, this policy is already adopted, all we need is going on, changing, this is all, this policy, the document changes, on the website. But therefore, it's not.
Let me, I want to clarify something, over my seat, just so the board's clear, everybody who's listening and watching.
who's listening and watching, this is not a board policy, you have a board policy that talks about how you do your board business, and board duty, and responsibilities, this is simply a document that is principles operations, that all of you, whenever you're on, have a workshop, with the representative, the owners, school board's position, so, that's what this document is, it is a working document of the board, it is not a board, it is not a policy manual, it is not a policy, say, a board report policy, so I want to be careful with that term here, this is an operating document, that you all agreed to, hey, we're going to work our best, for the board, or to be able to do this, so I want to make sure that that's clear.
And I stand corrected, this, these principles are up and in, in force for a long time, for years, and all of you are doing, so we had a workshop, the board's talking about making the changes, we've identified here, you know, the bottom, you know, I don't, the rest, most of the stuff, was longer, you started the current first paragraph, a line of responsibility, everything else was discussed, we're just doing a workshop in August. Yeah, I'm going to go down, you know, that implies that some of my, I don't have opinions, but I, you know, in, arguing with the board, certainly, the policy, the culture of this, some of the policy, and, yeah, it's not the right person.
So, so I think that you're somewhat correct, in the sense of, you know, we haven't joined the board recently, this is probably something that you're not asked to begin with, as those of us who've been on, and why, so to that sense, you know, I can understand, so anytime that we're doing something that really is involving wordsmithing more than it is involving any change of direction, which is what this is, it's not a policy, it's not a curriculum, or budgetary matter, it's really just how we treat each other, and it's something that was put in place many years ago, and every time we have new board members, we add a, a workshop, in which we do this, and many other things, so anytime that there's something that's a wordsmithing issue, traditionally, we haven't done the three-step process, but, again, we're going to, honestly, anybody should be free, if a body comes up with a board vote, to say, hey, you know, there's things, just like Mr. Man, you know, there's things I don't understand about this, I'd either like to discuss it, or I'd like to pull it off, and, you know, talk about, in my thoughts about that.
It just gives me the word, word, that I already practice, as how the board is going to grow, as I can work with, that's my interpretation, it's hard to practice.
I don't want to misunderstand, when I'm getting at, again, this is a philosophical issue, when we ask to vote, we either do, we study it, discuss it, and then, you know, invite over a conversation, versus we have, like, go down at a local time, and, you know, that would be my reaction to it, I, you know, I'm not posing any word here, or information help, etc., so I just, you know, being you're the board, you know, I just want to make sure I can explain the rules of work.
And really, this, this is the product of the discussion that we had on August 8th, so, so this is really the product of that discussion, so we had a very thorough discussion, and that, and that this is simply documented in this, and, and I remember Ms. Tony's recommendation, and she said, you know, you have this session, where you do your team building, and you make these agreements in closed session, but the outcome of the session should be approved by the board in public, so that's what we're doing tonight, is proving essentially the outcome, you know, of that, of that session, so, I hope you're comfortable with that, and, I like, did we do it?
Since I seconded the motion, and since the whole basis of this is collegiality, and mutual respect, I would be going, Mr. Man, instead of, or Mr. Man, I would feel more comfortable waiting until another meeting, I would be going to withdraw my second, in a lot of time, it's not an important issue to change the course of the district, but it does go to have the operating board, so I would, either way, as far as that goes.
I'm ready for that, for the machine.
All right, Mr. Secretary, you come with the, the, please.
Mr. Paulson? Mr. Swanson? Yes. Mr. Man?
I go, yes, I'm, what is, uh, about?
This is actor.
Yes.
Mr. Man?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
This is in Japan.
Yes. Yes. All right, it's a discussion item, a couple of open contract proposals, with intercom or community engagement process, we would like to pick out this discussion, okay, actor?
I would like that we start the discussion, uh, speaking, and, kind of framing a little bit, you know, and certainly encourage each member of the board member to jump in on this discussion, because I do believe it is very, very important, as we inform, first of all, I want, you know, certainly, to commend the board on recognizing the importance of this, and moving it from an action to a discussion item, based on some, that I see, government, the Joe board members, as well as the discussion at the committee level as well. I think I want to draw, first of all, draw the board members' attentions to the documents and the green folder, that is district goal number for, so if you wouldn't mind just taking this, and I want to, you know, recognize why this item was initially at action, and move it to discussion, to make sure that board members are aware of why we're going to work with it here. Back in the summer, I believe it was, 12 July, the board established, maybe it was August, or November, the board established board votes for this year, and we had a very specific discussion about establishing a new district goal, and that is the district goal of the board, which is that we will stay connected with the community, determine the priorities and foster partnerships, broad, make it, and certainly, it's very important for a level school district. Along with this goal, there's also some board milestones that the board set for itself initially, and again, I don't want to read each one of those to you, but I do want to point out the second one in particular, with this, uh, particular item that we're having discussed around the CV, as developing mechanisms, and, uh, find ways to be engaging, and stakeholder input, including schools to strengthen our community partnerships, in other words, find ways to be constantly, consistently, uh, bringing the community into conversations and, and provide, so, to bring context to this discussion, you know, it's very important. And then, as you can see here, again, one of my contract goals is very specifically related to this, and that is to, you know, engage the community, and make sure that the community understands where we're headed, and why we're headed, to paraphrase a specific contract goal, and then finally, uh, this particular story here, is to work with the board to come up with a process that the board can support, that the staff can move forward, that we can certainly move toward giving feedback on educational, occupational facility issues, so that's a very specific target the board has set on the issue of superintendent, so I wanted to make sure the board took a minute, and, and looked at this, and through some of the discussion we had on this topic, mainly in committee sessions, but also individually with each of you, I believe there's, at this point, it's very important we have a discussion about what is the purpose here, what is the purpose of the engagement, and I certainly believe, or we can move to some type of solution, which was on the committee, we can make sure that the board is comfortable, and, and everyone is, is stayed what their clear purpose is, because if we're not, you know, if I don't live there, and we aren't going to be able to move forward in any cases, no matter what the school is, and, and many times, maybe we stay, jump right to solutions, instead of thinking about what the purpose is. So, thank you for listening, I wanted to, at least share my thoughts, I will tell you what my thoughts is, and I certainly am willing to listen, and reach whatever I want to do, I would go through this process, we can get some strategic focus for the next several years, five, seven years, you know, three to five years, whatever the case may be, and I would hope that we can also get the reset button per second, in other words, it's been a long time since we've done very concentrated, uh, community outreach to, to all of our stakeholders, and to get, uh, input on where we head for some program, where we would head for some of our facility, where we may head when it comes to physical responsibility, the board is always very diligent to make sure we're following, and I do believe that the community will help guide our vision, and, and hit those targets where, so we are bringing our commitments forward, not only as a label, but also, you know, to the community with it, if that meeting comes up, so, uh, so that's my thoughts, and that's what I would want to gain from this process, and so I do want to certainly encourage the board to share your thoughts on your purpose for this, I will listen, get your questions.
Who would like to, Mrs. Jack?
I would think that, as important as it is to hear what the community opinions are about things, I would think the majority of the community needs to be informed, as if not more, than the majority of their opinions, because my guess is, they don't know what they don't know, and to know what we're doing, and on all the levels, and what expectations are, what we're coming for, what the national level is, what expectations, what our surrounding communities are, I mean, just beyond the board, as educated, maybe tremendous to have a clue what this industry got, and a whole separate industry that the normal person has no idea, they can have sent their kids to school, and that's their only experience of it, and that was a really bad experience, so I feel that, you know, we could just do a real, sort of, marketing campaign, a more educational campaign, of what it is that this business is all about, and, and then they may be forming opinions about their priorities, and, and just become more engaged with it, and, 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 and.
Yeah, I think what I'm very interested in doing, kind of my focus here, is that this might be able to break somebody without their job shot, I don't know about everyone and anyone shaping our direction of the board, that's kind of my, my, my statement, this is a simple statement, I look back to this, and I didn't notice this the last time, the board partnerships, there are three times, and I think, if I look at other school districts, it reminds me, the best school districts, it's not a division between the community and board in the school district, there's a common, common partnership with the Education Foundation, Business Community, PTA, etc., there's really a team internal to this school district, and this board, and external, that are kind of going down the same path, going down the same area, and I take it in detail, comprehensive community aging effort, and that's why we tried to use words in here, because that we found that out, so, we just want, on my opinion, I just want other people outside of this school district, this school board, to join us on that journey, and get their input, and participate, and, and, and people that haven't had any, all shape our direction of our lives, that's what I want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson, who would like to go next, on the purpose?
Yes, I, I have a number of items I want to go over here, I think that, you know, I want to start with a fundamental, as Brad just said, is that we need to deal with the community made in order for this, I've had multiple conversations with government, government and residents, I've, I've taken a number of studies like this, with the cities, Lions Days, Park Districts, and so on, and, and each, the city, I know, any organizations of government, or local government, today, is trying to make that feedback, in fact, I had a conversation today with the city, the mayor, and he asked me to join us in this process, and get the city back as well, because the city managers, programs are saying the same thing, so I clearly agree that we need to be important, I, I think that I have a middle problem with a couple of components of this, I don't know, number one is timing, I, I think there's certainly uncertainties, the pension that we talked about, the intensive board, or other issues, you know, the, you know, the, I call it unfavorable government view right now, you know, the economic conditions are limited, I don't know that we're going to get the right, you know, the answers that I think are going to be helpful to us, I think there's animosity to governmental entities right now, I, I closely looked at, and I had asked for a kind of example report, that, you know, the consultant group that produced, another group that they worked at, and I think about that, and I, I truly believe that I could write this document today, and practically everyone who's required six months from today, or nine months from today, $60,000 later, or $50,000 later, I, this to me is not important, I would be happy if I got it, I've seen a number of reports like that, and, and they just don't, they're not addressed to the issue, I mean, these are very generic, I could list everyone who's down right today, and I think they would appear on the, on the end product, I'd be greatly disappointed, because I know that, I, I don't think the study really addressed a group that, you know, I don't want everyone that partakes of these programs, and I, I think when I look at the plan, there are a number of, you know, committee, or outreach conferences, and so on, and getting members to serve on committees, or individuals, to serve on committees that would go on weeks, and, and I don't think we're going to get the people that vote 70%, the 70% of the people that don't have children in school, and, you know, those are the people we have to, we have to reach, we have to learn what their thoughts are, and they're the ones that can drive, whether we pass things, or support things, or whatever, and I'm not sure that this objective will reach that group, now, do I know that's for that, no, but do I think that if we commit to this program, it has got margin for error, it has a fixed cost of $5,000, I mean, that I think we can get some good feel for earlier, I just recently was about, one of the boards, I'm about what, that we did a survey, and the survey responses, every, the average age on the survey, it was an internet survey of customer, every, the average age in response was 61 years old, and the whole purpose of the, the survey was try to reach out to at least the 30, 30, 35-year-old people, so that survey did actually nothing for what we wanted to find out, and I'm getting the feel, from what I'm looking at, some of the moments of this, this contract, that that's what we're going to, what we're going to see as an end product, I, I believe that we should really kind of closely evaluate, when we talk about committees, I, I, I think I would like to have a vision, before we commit to the full process program, to say, who are these people, how will we recruit them, and are they going to commit six weeks, eight weeks to this program, and not keep parents as students, and parents as students, we have to go in and reach easy, and, and I think we will get that feedback, and, I, I don't know that we can get it from those that are not having, you know, the parents to the Catholic students, or, you know, the retired, and, 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 so that, you know, we're reaching out to the right people, and getting true response, I think, you know, what I'm seeing in this contract, I just think it's overkill, or jumping both feet, and I also think very strong retirement, as well, I think we need to let, let some things fall together, or maybe the federal government issue, or the pension program, or whatever, because those are going to drive certain answers, so, I, I have trouble supporting the approval of this contract, based on this.
I, in this community, in turn, the only one I would care to discuss is waiting, because since 2006, and the real estate economy went down, and the whole climate environment went down, we could wait and wait, and who knows, I just, I don't think waiting for things to turn around is, we are where we are, and we've decided where we are, I, and having gone through those six years, we will manage it better, own manage it, and then finally, 2012, now this year, it has gotten better, I just don't think waiting for the government to make changes is, I have confidence in that, our, that is where we are, and, you know, getting business as usual, I don't, no, I don't, I don't. I don't, no, I think more is best for education, I think, yeah, I'm torn as well.
I think you're, I don't want to miss the thought waiting. I think what on my, my approach is I think this is too much, too quick. I think that I think we should have a questionnaire, we should give some of these community rules, facilitators, and so on, begin that process. But to jump in with a high cost, you know, I just, I think we're going to get answers quicker and easier, I guess, than they said. And maybe that's my comment. So waiting is not truly the, I agree with you, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Robert?
Yeah. On my part, I'd rather the community engagement committee, you know, Dr. Costin, also, I'd like to share some of the common issues. But I'd like to hear from two thousand and ninety-nine, what this is going to work with us here. And so it's crazy, but I'd like to give some more details on the market, about the, that way the grants are being spawned or being altered, I think, or whatever. But now, the community process is going to be a lot of assistance, and all the dollars in spring, and out of district, towards independent, and, you know, parent, which is, I had, I had not consistent decisions, so I don't know what I'm going to do. But I don't really know.
I, first of all, I want to point out that I support the community engagement initiative. I think it has great value, will bring us, if done properly, gather very good information from those of us who are trying to reach out to you. As I shared with Dr. Harris, I think the difference is that it's the who, what, when, why kind of scenario to achieve that end result. This is going to be a clearly ongoing process. Dr. Harris and I have talked about his vision for the district, five to seven years strategic goal, objectives. And for me, I believe that we have to have a process that's going to reach those folks who are most critical to us to help sustain the district. And I believe that maybe it's, maybe, I mean, it's too simple, but for me, I believe that conducting within our own organizations, our group of staff, some very preliminary public forums to just listen to people, gather some input from them, get some ideas from them, gather them, prioritize them, I think would add a very big value to us before we go into a full, all engagement with an outside firm, again, whether it's Unicom or some other organization. So again, maybe, maybe I'm making this too simplistic, but I believe that the group that we need to reach probably will come through the internet, the group that we need to reach, we need to just paper every day. I think there's some vehicles whereby we can get to those folks, advise them, inform them of what the district is trying to accomplish, and work focused on this very serious initiative, important initiative, and that their voice is important. And this is all, which obviously in the district, but that seventy-five percent of those folks who don't have students in the district, etc., we're going to need their support and their input to sustain what we're going to be going forward. So I just think we shouldn't be dured by dynamite, it's too much of an important topic. So we shouldn't self announce certain deadlines, because it's not the process, it's, we're not going to get all the answers in six months, nine months, eight, three months' time. So those are my concerns, Jim. I applaud you, Matt, for doing your diligence and bringing something forward. I think it was helpful, you know, to provoke questions and make us feel down, make us step back and rethink other possible things we could offer. So that's really my feedback and my interest in how we might speak or give further consideration to how we should.
But yeah, maybe I can share my thoughts and that's a share on the community that will help me to just open us up in the whole way. You know, I think we were asked initially here to say, what do we want to get out of the community engagement, not how should we go about it. And I feel that our discussion right now is conflating those two issues. And so while there may be questions about whether or not Unicom is the right thing, I think what we need to be clear about for Dr. Harris's purpose and for the committee's purpose is what do we hope to get at the end of the process, whatever that process will be and whoever does that process. And I'm not sure that committees would have enough information based upon the remarks so far, but I'll let them and hope I'm on that. But I would just say what I would want to get out of it, and I think there's four things that I can think of. First of all, I do want to know once again from the forces of the community, what are their priorities? And although I do agree with Mr. Anderson that, yep, I bet you we could sit down and write probably pretty well what the priorities are, I do think it's always helpful to make sure that we're checking that, that we're writing on. And years ago, when we did this and learned that the community's top priority was high quality teachers, that has been a guiding principle ever since. Things change, a lot has changed out there in the world, and maybe that is not the community's top priority anymore. They certainly probably want high quality teachers, but maybe there's something else out there. Maybe it's technology, maybe it's social, emotional relationships, who knows? So first, I would like to double check that my idea of priorities is answered. But secondly, because I do agree that we can probably come up with this list, it's more important for me to learn than what are their trade-offs. Because as Dr. Harris says, we can do anything, though we can't do everything. And so in one of those, the community says we want great teachers, we want sports teams, we want a whole menu of, you know, extracurriculars, we'd like to have Mandarin, we'd like to have technology, but, and we'd like low tasks. And, but you can't do all of those. So I guess, at least in the current climate, we don't have those, that luxury. So I would want to know, and I agree with you, Mr. Anderson, the only report we got back was simply, here's what the community wants, twenty things. I want to know, great, but assuming we can't do all twenty of those, what are their trade-offs? What, you know, what are you willing to leverage against each other? Then I also, you know, just to be honest here, we have some very specific problems going forward that we know about, that you write, Mr. Anderson, and we're going to need the entire community to support for. Jefferson is one of a couple of facility, I mean, substantial facilities that we can't just pull together out of our budget. You know, the day we, the year we are just, so we're going to need some support for that, for some other facility needs that we know are upcoming, administrative offices. Technology is really going to be more and more like infrastructure than facility in the sense that that's a substantial investment. It's not clear to me that what the community might want with that is something that we can support on our budget. So some of those big ones that we normally have questions about, or is it how can we go about solving them? There's where I'd like the community to think with us and say, well, you know, we either like to support it through dollars, or we'd like to support it through time, allowing time for this to develop, you know, to get there, we'd like to support it through partnerships, we'd like to give you some ideas as to what we see as the ideal, you know, facility plan. So that would be third. And lastly, hopefully, I guess, there would be some more people who sit through those six or eight weeks and find that, you know what, they really do have a passion for staying connected with our district and not necessarily parents. I agree, that is the key. Because, you know, the parents are already working, you know, they're, they're hands to bones on having the students and the kids. And so I think it's, any other people don't know as much about it to stay engaged with us long term. So I see this process as a springboard to bringing people in who might want to make that commitment. So those are the four things I want on that, whether or not Unicom or the particular, you know, process we have in mind is the best. That to me is a separate discussion.
It is a spot for Mr. Robert. And I think my, what I want to see out of this too, if you want to be a person or if you want to address my concerns. And then thinking about how to put it in there, just to put it in a nutshell, and I think what we really need to, to find out from the community, what is it they want and what is it they're willing to pay for? And when we find that out, then if they want to know what they're willing to pay for, then perhaps we get some creative ideas from the same community, how to pay for, or how to raise the money through a foundation, through whatever other means we can use for business, how, how we can raise the money together, so whatever, where they would want this to be. So that's kind of where I am in a nutshell, I think. The report that we have to get to that would not be, you know, a big decision demonstrated to us as a chance, and I think that we have to be very substantial to kind of get all those questions answered, that was the whole question.
First of all, I want to thank the chairman, the chairman, and the board for setting forth, and sharing the comments I appreciate. I'll keep the first part of it in short, because it's somewhat consistent, businesses are important. Brad said, those words, it's, it's, what we have to do with the outreach process is an idea, a firm idea of what the community needs by the medium of odd prospect, not just parents and students in school, but that seventy, thirty-five percent, it's on hard to say, it says that percent, I don't want to really say it, it's, well, privately reported. And I'll tell you why, because for the, all of us have visited Jefferson School since I came here on the board, there's certainly others to be, and many of us have needed something about Jefferson. We engaged, we approached our legislature to do a survey, we sent out names, every resident of the district, number, September of last year, former residents, or, um, hosting forms on Jefferson, or survey on Jefferson, and wanting feedback on that, so we did some on the, 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 we did that internally. And we heard a great job, it's back, doing that, but the participation rate, it was very, very, both with respect to the survey and to those who attended our form, it took many of the same people who attended each of those forums. And how meaningful, Thomas, we thought, they were meaningful for individual to prepare, but they were for some of the community. Some of the questions were based upon, we gathered some of that information, developed a plan, which I presented, when I gathered it, it was right. That's my experience so far, with the outreach, it's hard to determine. Ten days ago, I had a question, I was being hosted by the mayor of Carroll Street, who invited leaders of various governmental committees, of jurisdictions, and various aspects of what's going on in those, including three or four schools. Superintendent from District Eighty-Nine, District Eighty-Nine is trying to propose a town hall meeting, finding out from the community, what basically going with this district, the high school.
Eighty-seven.
This probably eighty-nine, sorry, sorry.
Eighty-seven, so I'm a high school.
And the first town hall meeting was in Carroll Street, in North, and the mayor of Carroll Street intended it, this was his office, gosh, I went to that and it was a very, very turnout at the town hall. I know that you try to get a lot of people to attend, more openly, same people, but I see it all the time, all these meetings that it's just, were, were the ones you showed up. So I don't know how meaningful, I hope the District Eighties that the town hall process turns out to be meaningful, but again, they're trying to do it for turnout. I was looking for a vehicle that, or a process by which we could gauge the broad spectrum of our, our community forms, where we could learn from the community what it is they were to provide us. I certainly don't want to direct, I don't want a passion so that there's a priority to improve. I don't hear from the community what they can do to provide us are. I believe Dr. Harris has informed me that this community, basically, process was used in St. Charles by Unicom. They were surprised to find out that the real highest priority, or the highest priority is that the community there is by a size. It surprised the board and the administration that that was an issue. We may be surprised. I want to find out, and what engagement process where, hopefully, we're surprised or we're confident that maybe we did have a wholesome on the community. And to do that, we need to engage the largest number of citizens we possibly can. And I was impressed by the house presentation that was the, what they're doing in April to Liberty, the Centrals, without concern, they're doing in Iowa, Illinois, they've paid four, five, six hundred people, so I don't know if there's more, sitting down at tables, discussing what to report to them, and coming up with solutions or resolutions or a plan of that. And I know that in some respects, the board that was provided by the town, the Centrals with District School, it was early, they had a number of template solutions. One solution that they were looking for was what they should do, they asked, they had a large number of elementary schools, they needed to solve them for, we didn't support that, and so how? They got that answer, they implemented that process, reduced the number of elementary schools, it's been successful. So that's the process I was looking for, in the town, speaking out, to answer for that process. Now, with respect to the timing, we have no control over what's happening in some areas that we have no control here, as we're going to have economic issues in the United States. It is what it is, and we need to either deal with it or sit in our hands and not communication forever, because we're never going to control this. So if we're lucky, we need to move ahead now and find out what we can do to get this to take under. The process that we identified wasn't six month process, where we would get a report from the town, the mayor, Joe, but that would not be the end, as those words pointed out. I would hope that the process that is initiated through this effort, of Unicom, or someone outside, from a consultant program, is its greatest initiative, will survive after the relationship with the consultant program. And they not survive in the same form, but passing through this process, we'll have a foundation created that's the union people that will have a partnership with it. Perhaps we'll have an organization at the top of that will engage the community for us, share with us information, maybe, non-sociable, but we can't get to that point unless we initiate something now. The specific process that we identified, Paul Revers, that performed, facilitated the meeting of eight rural citizens who were representative of the broad spectrum of the, in, in areas, seventy-five percent of, we have to tell them, it's possible, people with different political persuasions, people that had different views about, so, local views, whatever it be, so that they could reach out and invite, convince their friends, their, their friends, whose, their connections to the town, along with the vast and pretty thorough of marketing efforts, in companies to get people to attend these conferences. I don't think you can, I think race forces, but then artists, it means race to do, they were, were pretty mean, mean to our, our community staff. You know, our, our people worked last year, had what I knew was in the process, had they been timed for something, had they been personnel for something, and something that's beyond what we have available in our resources. Dr. Harris has successfully negotiated here in town, speed, so that they won't stop, not even a thousand dollars. I think with respect to, I don't think we are responsible for, for any money now, for the world. Spending that sort of money to make honest, sincere, meaningful, that, 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 so it sounds to the point that we're heading in the right direction, and not, not wishing anything out of us, but we were, we're about to develop a strategic plan, that implemented, it'd be useful for the next, I think, five years. I think it's, 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 money goes away, just because we want to, most of the engagement out there, but doesn't mean that committing into the performance that that is going to act. Non-timely, in terms of, in terms of, that, uh, we're very busy, and, and, and much responsible, particularly, particularly goes out of the facility, and we have to, um, help, help work out, and, 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 um, sorry to lengthen my presentation, but, um, that's, that's.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Well, I really appreciate this discussion, this has been very exciting, and I, I told, I was totally for having a survey or having a town. I just wasn't as focused on the outcome. And by, Rosemary, by you, you know, really saying that, and I, and your, your, like, putting, and, I mean, if we can get to that, that would be phenomenal. So I'm all for making money, money well spent. I just want to put that educational piece into it somehow, when they're meeting, because I, you know, you step outside, you get outside of school, the average community member doesn't, they just know their own dashboard, and they don't, you know, they don't have the gravitation. So I just, like, you know, I always say, just remind them, value at home depends on the reputation of the students. So, you know, start with that, and where, you know, the pockets are, and just, if, if their home value, their taxes, and the response, um, I don't think, most people, not all, most people don't find paying for something, if they know they're getting, you know, value of what they're paying for. So we just want to know what they're getting, and what's still a need, and, and so on, and then activate, like, this bed, and get their feelings, and, and so on. So I'm all for it, and, and forty-nine dollars, very reasonable, like you said, for our budget, and besides our community and district. And just, just, maybe nothing else, but just educating our community, and letting them, you know, we're here, and the importance of it is all.
I, I thought I would just thank you, I've already had approaches to community meeting, we talked about cost timing, and, and, you know, but. In my experience, there's three ways to do a community meeting. There's the full survey, the problem with the full survey is, like, if I don't get to participate, my neighbor buddy, like, he'll give you good questions, I'll let out. The email survey, which is difficult, because a lot of the questions is to shape their response, I think, in surveys, you know, the end, I might get to, and specific information that is of interest to me. Maybe I have to be talking to those people five, six times, and they respond, and spend, and even explain to certain, the surveys that we've done, or the result of anything. And the, the open house process, is the approach we're proposing, I think, it, it's difficult, because we can, large people, who tend to reach out to those people, it's a big challenge, for the staff, and only administrators, or the committee, or the other facilitator, to get those people there. But I think the value in that process is, is the dialogue between the participants. It's not just, just kind of a question, we propose them, it's, they get to sit down, have a very short presentation, they get to sit down, and use the speakers, people they have in common, from different parts of town, and they're interested, they get to talk questions, they get to discuss the most, and, and develop their inquiries at that table. And all that information is, yeah, presented, to the facility, through, with the support of, who do you have, and institutions, to participate in. So, I think what's unique about the open house process that we have proposed as a community, is that there's value in the process. It's not just a paper to get, and, and that process that engaging people, people can come back, maybe they're not interested in saving the district presentation, or they're really interested in technology conversation, or building conversation, they're interested to come, or they want to. Many people come multiple times, to be invested, to assist the participation. So that's what I think, where we as a board, as a community, get the most benefit, not the words that are on paper, but the participation of the people to support that process, and go through the campaign, that, that value is what's the most. So that's why I have, I agree with strong support of this approach. I think the conversation to the community, I think it's an opportunity to raise the market, we can do some things, more open to people, all the members, seven, or seventy-seven,
So what is the example? I think the board can guide us. You know, if you tell, you know, the benefit, hey, we want to gain community feedback. If that particular example, they were looking for some answers or some issues in more of a bigger picture and some solutions to the personal program. That was what they wanted. There was just a sample report. I, you know, there's other standards and I can certainly show them. I have worked with this method and I always have run this a couple of times in my previous district. And I know they will, they want to deliver the product once. The board target is so critical. You know, the board chart or the board purpose is very, very critical. If they aren't careful with board purposes, you're right, they won't get themselves a lot. They won't get it. Uh, that's why I wanted to make sure we had this, starting this discussion this evening. Uh, and, and at least try to edit it out. Now I, I stayed out and I appreciate everybody's standing, what their intent was. And, you know, I'm a little closer to what I thought. Yeah, I wasn't sure, I wasn't totally sure. Uh, I think we're, you know, as I was being here, jotting down just particular items that each one of you shared. And, um, I think, you know, we're, we're not quite there probably, but I do think that the intent is, is common. You know, I think one of the things for this to be a five-year goal, if we laid out a charter for five years, okay? We want to create a process that maybe we have an issue come up, maybe we have a foundation. And after we get the community, uh, bought into, you know, a particular style of being as a district to want to collect community feedback. No, we may have one topic, we may have one topic, but we may all come, and staff will be very able to do that really formally. As long as we've got a community condition or we don't understand how we, as the board, we as a district, wanted gain community feedback. And if we do several sessions on different topics and then we show, hey, we're going to follow up on these ones. We may not do every single thing, but we may make some decisions. Let's just use class session example. I don't know if that'll come out, but, you know, there are ways to go about it. There's a bunch of priorities. Maybe there's a bunch of priorities that we target, primary priorities. But we really focus then on trying to get classized now to a certain level, in grades of K-12. Because we know that the critical skills we're creating pay off over the next 10 years. I mean, I use this as an example. That's something that, you know, you can come up with. But that's for the staff to work with and input and bring recommendations to the board and, and work on. You know, technology is the same today. Uh, you know, maybe this community isn't so on a one-on-one technology. Maybe they're saying, you know what, more figured out a way to use the resources you have and provide the best, um, environment you can for the, you know, the, the maybe to say that. But I'd like to see where the levers are on that particular topic as we bring recommendations forward. Uh, I guess the, the importance here is, is broader than just one topic from my seat. It's really about trying to, uh, not only answer some, uh, get some details and some shaping guides and direction on certain topics, but also to show the community, we are District 200. Here's how we're going to get input anytime we have a hot topic or issue that needs to be resolved. Maybe there'll be another budget crisis, I don't know. Maybe the state will pull all the finances off the table, you know, who knows? Uh, and so therefore, you know, how are we going to go about the process to give community feedback? And that's the big thing. And then we go back to the board district goal. It's about creating a sustained process of how we can gather community feedback. Not just a survey, maybe not just a select, maybe it's not just a isolated committee on a particular topic. It's about how are we going to go about getting feedback from the community? That's the longer term is that I think the value of a console like Unicom bring to the organization. I saw that in my previous district. They're still getting some ones there on, on, right now it's in Ohio, they had three suicides in that district. They're having some of these open too, but they're using that same process and same style that we did when we were looking six years ago on one topic. And, um, it served them well for a long period of time, uh, to have a gaining community feedback support or how we're going to work with, uh, meeting and, and kids. That was in my previous district, you know, I, I looked at the long-term, I, I didn't even have that there. They work on your, your one cycle. That was it. They're still using the style and process to give community feedback.
I'd like to make a recommendation. Um, I've heard James Stonehouse about other organizations that both have community feedback. Um, I think maybe worthwhile for community feedback to be soon in, um, before we need to be ready. Ask questions of District 203, I've been to some trouble, um, perhaps the same folks in District 103, I don't know. Any others that you know that you have, um, basically made the processes permanent? What other alternatives they can do, um, do, um, implement, communicate the process? And my helpful overall recommendations are, um, I know we have experience already in the internet survey, policy survey. Try to conduct a nice form here to support the, uh, this, this more homework and then we can work at the board level.
I, I totally agree with that. I think, you know, the, the thing that I, I will hopefully look at in that process is look at the end product of the, of the reports that came. Because the one thing that's driving me is I feel like this one report that I saw really came up with anything that would be what we've talked about the other day. Next concern. Uh, you know, and I think again, no, it's that costs, you know, maybe it's a hundred thousand, but better than numbers meant to be, which I knew. I just want to make sure that we're not disappointed come June that we got results that I went and, and documented. You know, community are not documented, I, I handle research, so.
Uh, that's, that's, that's everything.
Uh, you know, I did have a question for the, for Mr. Anderson. I think, um, we're waiting to hear from you, unless I, what you want to get out of the process. Uh, you know, what do you think the purpose is? I'm not sure that we, we heard your objections, you know, to, to, but what do you see the purpose of all this? And if I, I already said that I lost the rest of the conversation to you again, I apologize. I think, I think if we have a clear purpose, uh, we can get to a better deck than what we can try to do. And, um, I, I'd like to hear, you know, what you, you think the purpose.
Can sum that up real quickly. I want to make sure that we end up with an end product that's can be utilized by us and help us make future decisions. That is developed from a total community-based influence. I want to be surprised like the referendum in Jefferson was. We have to reach out to the 70% that are not parents of children. And I think that if we can achieve that, get to an end product, gives us guidance, I'm fully supported, but I'm concerned that we'll do it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you for the great, great effort. Jim, do you have something to move on to? On, um, what you think the purpose during that, just make sure everybody else, or yeah? Yeah. Do you have a purpose for all that I'm in, all for each other? I think, I don't think we have a big conflict on level one of the purpose. Uh, but what I'd like to come back to here is to say that this, this event set the tone and set the stage for ongoing community engagement. Because, you know, through participating in their process, our staff will be trained in, in the process. And so if your issues come up, future guidance that we may need, we can then reproduce that on a smaller scale. And, uh, and help gain an input from the community to guide our decisions in the future. So I see that as a long-term benefit for, and then an extra coming and guidance through. But I think, yes, we'll, you know, the committee seems going to get some more answers to, to some of the concerns that are brought up. And I, I really appreciate us having this discussion.
Let me ask a question for the board quick on the topic. Uh, we have our committee scheduled on the 23rd. Uh, one of the, you know, tentative topics was this. And I was kind of waiting to, to see whether, how, right? I still think we need to continue this discussion and take that next step to come to some consensus then about solutions. And I, I guess I'm going to ask the board if we want to have that topic, maybe sole topic for that, to have a whole meeting. Try and make some consensus and take the time that we have set aside there. Now, staff has other topics to certainly, but this is critical. You know, regardless of the topics, if we don't take the time and have a whole meeting coming up in two weeks. And really, you know, the committee will probably be sometime, you know, between now and then. And we're certainly going to look for some different information, artifacts, whatever the case may be, to try and, uh, solidify that we can choose the right process. And we can share that at the table. Is that the wish for the board to spend our, have that one or two items in the whole meeting or not? I'm asking. Again, not that we need to think about when this next discussion is going to take place. It doesn't happen then, then when this is going to happen.
What was on? I got ready before that and I, I think again, I want to move forward with this, okay? I just want to make sure that when we get to an end product or happy, I think, uh, our summation is perfectly, you know, this should be a guiding document for us in the future. And if we can make sure by looking at all the results and feel comfortable that that is the product we're going to get, I, I will park it behind that. So I think again, that background can make this a short lead, okay? So because I think, you know, as long as, you know, I've looked at it pretty briefly in my office. I hope everyone else is looking at what other examples we can get and kind of give that information. And so I'm ready to go on. If we can identify our committee members to, you know, give us that comfortable and, you know, give you some comparative information. And I, I think I can also, so it's just, I really need to make sure we're getting that, what most were talking about, our, our, our committees talked about, that's what we're talking about.
Can I, you know, can I say, um, you know, when I sit on the, um, highnessy board, one of the things we wrestle with is interpretations. And so we have the process there where our executive director has got a policy, but then he writes his interpretation of that policy. We look at it and we say, yeah, we agree, that's the right interpretation that you have with the policy. And I'm thinking for me, that sort of thing can be useful, but the summary is good, but the idea of a guiding document may actually look different in our minds. We all may say, yes, we want that document, but some of us might be more comfortable with a looser definition of that than others. So I guess I'm wondering, and I don't know if appropriate, whether it's the committee that tries to come up with a, a definition of what a outcome would look like that would meet that, or whether it's staff, or whether it's some combination. But for me, to have a, a discussion that is meaningful would be to at least have something like that informing to say, yeah, this, this is what I was talking about.
I think, you know, that's a very good point. It's, I do believe appropriate, you know, as per, uh, our committee and along the staff, you know, to, uh, try to come up with some type of a guiding document. That works maybe a, a template as to what we would expect and, and make sure that we get the right vendor that can give us that for you. Does that make sense? Now, the whole back to the discussion, I, I do believe, you know, I feel much more clear where everyone is at and the thing, you know, that's really about that district purpose or the board purpose. And, and create some type of a template and say, hey, Unicom or whoever, you can do this, you can deliver this, you know, under the terms of what you set forth. And, and that's where we can, I believe, I don't want to speak for those programs or policies. You know, I believe that the appropriate role, at least we've got board members of all, staff certainly, you know, working with, uh, feeling ourselves and try to come up with something as well.
Got to keep that and then also if we could research the, but the other district, I'm not going to see you doing, and done it better than a recommendation. Um, and could you first, I can start as, how many companies are you, who are you just interested in?
For the scope of the board that we have set out to do, to my knowledge, you know, those of you who need to, uh, I'm not saying that I've been into a lot of areas, my day of support. This is pretty significant, more precise, the scope of both the topic. Um, you know, if you want to go outside of Chicago area, it's probably, for sure. But, you know, we get much loss package there and so we're certainly watching for that as well.
Doctor, with respect to, um, you maybe must do a topically impressive, we will, we will, we will, we will. We only have a second meeting to remember, we, 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 we should be settled.
We will not need, uh, I have to be a little loving because we won't be all of the statutory government. So the client's basically looking at the whole, very hard information, have a lot of needing to be, uh, correct if I'm wrong, as far as I correct, we will, we will not need to have a double carry on that. So, uh, we will, we will, important, we're not going to go beyond that, I'm not saying for the spur of the moment, I'm just saying here, we won't have to have a double carry.
Yeah, with respect to the, the other topic we were looking at is updating board, having some of our staff, uh, curriculum staff.
Give samples, more like workshops, send your board members to interact in some of our learning tools. Uh, that can certainly be, you know, that's not full-time bound. I think this work was much more critical. Uh, that was, you know, it's important, you know, the 20% of learners still are important. Uh, it's talking today, today, certainly we can vet that to January if we need, if we need the time, we just will take the time. So it's not a, it's not a critical timing issue, uh, for the other people all the time. So this one is critical. This is going to guide a lot of programs that we're going to do, um, that's just my thoughts.
And I don't believe it's critical, but with respect to that, if you're trying to ask me, if I was to get, you know, about, you know, somebody, okay?
I don't believe there may be surprises from that, you are not going to be, you know, asking for more of that beyond, you know, the, uh, time.
As long as we're talking about change, um, for the November meeting, definitely the deadline for us to do in two days. Number one, you're going through the IASB resolutions that we obviously need in the end of the year and our, and we're going to get a number of, we said, correct, this is what's. And then we need to appoint a delegate to vote for us at the IASB convention. Uh, and they vote according to wishes of the board. So, uh, you know, they just study that document for the, uh, November meeting, a period to discuss and then vote on, on the act. And then the November meeting as well.
So my initial question was, do we need to set also a special order, does the board comfortable using the committee all the time to continue this discussion? And, and, you know, hopefully get some consensus now and, um, hooking into maybe some type of sample product and, and, um, bullet for that. If you're ready, if you might concern, I, I just need direction to the staff perspective so we can prepare for it.
It's my opinion.
And, and just to be clear, that could be the whole of the discussion with the idea that if there were a consensus then that would go on the, the number, not that we would be voting, yeah?
We're not being actioned on that. I don't hear that at a, at a point, if we need any more discussion about it, the action I don't hear, there's no giving. If there was to be an action.
All right, so ready to come to go to that and if there's any more discussion, we'll leave. Okay, well, thank you, this was a period of discussion and thank you everyone for participating and bringing your concerns forward as, as we've, we've divided by the principles that we just enacted. Okay, you are concerned now and, uh, discussing them and trying to get the result, so that you're all prepared. Uh, there's the report, it's a monthly financial report and employee report, any questions regarding reports? Okay, so then we have two reports from board members, uh, committee reports.
Can I say anything?
Uh, maybe, this would be a very good time to report, I would give your personal, uh, reports.
Any other committee reports?
Finance committee, uh, we have a meeting, we discuss the levies, discuss some of the presentation, the financial statements that we're looking at. And I believe a lot will be available at that time. We have a, we're discussing with you, I'm sure there's some recommendations about some transfers and so on, but they're well underway and we'll go forward to that conversation.
Any other committee reports?
No, Jim, I just want to mention just that the facilities committee is, we're trying to improve our first meeting hopefully within the next couple of weeks. We've got a couple of topics that we need to, uh, particularly on performance contract and also involvement, we need to, we need to break out, so we will look at that.
Any other board reports?
Two reports, uh, mentioned that, uh, the committee here is not having a meeting, we might have a peer, a girls team, we'll go Monday, or we'll strike a limit, I don't know, on there. It's not, I can say that, a lot of meetings here, heads of various governmental organizations that, um, perform activities in girls, um, um, facilitate cooperation, coordination, share ideas. And, uh, I was very interested in the second topic. Uh, one of my responsibilities is to be the tracking officer for the board. And then didn't expect to have a reminder, but, uh, October 29th, I have a dinner, that's in the film. Uh, and I encourage everyone to be ready to attend, uh, register, check, and so on, to be there on air. And then with the IASB convention in Chicago and Denver, uh, I want to encourage global board members to, because the Saturday, especially the breakout, it was during the course of the day. I attended one person's convention last year, I attended about four different breakout sessions during the course of the day. Um, not that very, very formal. Also, it's almost deeply important, this was early breakout session, so we need, of the board members of the district, you know, the course of the day. We get a sense of what's going on in the district, um, so I encourage you to do that. There's also some special things that I'm trying to, uh, materially, I just think, uh, I attended the financial center for body, uh, although I found that very, uh, it was a little initial cost of, 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 of those opportunities as well.
Can I just piggyback on that at 1:30 on Saturday afternoon, a breakout session on community engagement from IASB. I actually did follow them between our last meeting and this one. So they're, they don't offer services like what we're looking for, but they're looking to train boards to be like what we want to be, so that's great. And then 3:30, that afternoon, we have the great time slot, I'm on a panel on, uh, virtue of the charter service, so.
Very good. Uh, the other thing that is also helpful, that I've done a couple of times now over the years, is attended the Chicago Low School's tour. Uh, the Chicago Low School opened up in New Orleans, there's a select schools, for low members to, uh, to tour. And last year I toured Lake Ten High School, which is an all-mell technical high school. Uh, and they've done some amazing, amazing things there, and I, there's some good ideas and, and, you know, maybe no good about, not well about it, but there's some other things that they do, they do, uh, uh, so. It's, uh, it's always helpful to see, uh, see the schools edge. Are you, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, the, uh, October 29th, we, 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 anything on hand or?
I guess we do, yeah.
Any other board reports? Okay, um, talk to, to, okay. Talk to, to the session, community engagement, we have the, uh, next committee in the whole meeting, and then the other two instructional technology, anybody will follow some of that. Um, we did have a champion board, uh, yesterday, we almost stopped high school. I just, we had several community members and, uh, a great number of students there, and I liked the discussions, very lively. And, uh, again, they're very happy, uh, with their technology improvements, uh, and we were almost out. And, uh, and the students had some very interesting questions about, you know, why my, my, it was just given. That was the first thing.